Please say the prayer.
I want to lead this to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, please say the prayer.
Father God, we come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. Thank you for this time, for allowing us to be here. We ask for your guidance and your direction, Lord. We ask for wisdom to make the right decisions. God, we ask that you will guide us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Aaron, would you roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Ellifler?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Cora, Mr. Clark?
That's what she meant to say.
Sorry, Cora, Mr. Clark.
It's all right. Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda? We need approval of consent agenda. Everybody have time to look at it?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
No, second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion? Aaron?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellifler?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Citizen comments and special presentation, Mr. Thompson?
Ooh.
Put you in the hot seat quickly.
Thanks. Well, my name is Greg Thompson. I'm a parishioner at St. Joseph Parish, and our pastor asked me to head up a building committee to look at building and kind of a, not a rec hall, but a cafeteria type thing. So if we have weddings and funerals, we'll be able to accommodate those folks afterwards. So in March of this year, I contacted Forrest regarding any easement restrictions and setback requirements in regards to the building, and then kind of gave him an overall kind of proposal of what we were looking at. At that meeting, he indicated that I would need to get a plat for the parcel that we were looking at at the southern end of the church. I would need to get a plat surveyed of that. And so I took that back to our committee, and rather than end up with three parcels that we have or that we would be dealing with, we thought it would be better to combine the two parcels and make it one tract. And so I got back with Forrest, and he didn't see a problem with that, so I went forward with that. I contacted a survey, Russell Survey or Engineering Surveyors, to get scheduled, to get that plat surveyed. The plat is now complete. Pins are set. I've got the plat here. And so I took this to our diocese and had the bishop sign off on it. It's signed, and the notary on the Mylar got bled, so we had to kind of add a, I made a copy so you could tell who the notary was and how long her notary was good for. So the intent this evening is to get approval of the plat and have the mayor sign off on it. Once that's done, then I need to get it recorded. One of the Mylars will come back to, I think, Forrest, for the city to have. One will be for the courthouse, and then the copy will be for the parish. So if there's any questions, if I did, I did bring these. If you wanted to look at it, the... Originally, I guess the church is on the Glendale additions, lots 26 through 44. The rectory associated with the church is on the Mokavich Division lots 4 through 7. And so the one I originally met with Forrest and talked about, we were looking at having the new building at the southern end, and that's when he proposed that we have the lots 6 and 7, and then lots 39 through 42, combining those for the building. But we thought it would be better, when I went back to our committee, to combine the two and make it one large tract. So Forrest didn't see a problem with that, so that's what the survey, this plat, is of combining those two lots.
What's on those parcels right now?
On the eastern one in the Glendale is the Catholic Church, and on, which is in the, well, it's lot 5, it's 26 through 42.
Right.
The church is on that parcel, and then the 08 is where the rectory is. So we're combining those two and combining it into one entity, and it'll be called St. Joseph Tract.
So where you're planning on building is 6, 7?
No, it's going to be on the Glendale addition, and right now, we're thinking about having it in the back of the church. Now we're thinking about putting it in the front of the church with like a 10-foot space in between. But we still need to work on the rendering and get cost estimates, and then go to our parishioners, because we need a rendering and then a cost estimate, so they can make up their decision on whether or not they want to fund this proposed project. If they do, then we'll go forward. It'll probably be a three- to four-year project to raise the money before we build that. And then we'd work on getting all the drawings put together. We'd have to come back to you guys for approval on the building, and then go forward. If the parishioners don't approve it, then that'll probably be the end of this. But we figured it would be best to combine the parcels into one tract instead of having three different ones. So that's, our intent is to get it approved and just have it under one large tract.
So you're basically seeking approval of the combination, of the combining of the tracts, so that you can move forward with the...
Right, getting it recorded at the courthouse, and then providing you with a copy of the new plat. And so instead of having two parcels, it'll be just one parcel.
Right.
So then when we, if the parishioners approve of that building, then we'd have to come back and work with the planning department, get all the drawings put together, and that sort of thing. So we know what the height restriction is. We know what the setback restrictions and stuff are. So we'd have to work from there. But right now, we wanted to get this done, and then our next phase will be getting cost estimates together, a rendering, and then going to our parishioners. And then somewhere down the road, if it's a yes, then we'll start working towards putting, getting plans put together, and then working with the planning department.
Right.
Well, I'm sure there'll be a problem that you obviously have more information than we do about this. It's just a simple matter of combining.
Right, so basically administratively, under our municipal code, a lot combination does not require a public hearing nor notification of the neighbors. There is no by right development rights that are given by approving this, you know, creation of this tract. As we stated, you know, it has to come back to the city for all development approvals, building permits, all those things. So basically, all this is doing is creating an opportunity for them to build in the future on these parcels. You know, it could be re-subdivided later at some point. That would require a subdivision based on this administrative combination. So this is actually the cleanest way to do this. We initially talked about, you know, was one way to do it, but this honestly is, it gives them a few more options, and it's a lot cleaner as far as creating a single tract. So staff would certainly recommend approval of this and see where it takes them.
Great.
So what we need to do is make approval by board to...
Make a motion.
To re-sign.
I, we approve this change in the tract and making it a single tract, so that you can move forward with your plans. Second. And authorize the mayor to sign the plaque. Oh, and also, I move that the mayor has the opportunity to sign that.
Just a point order there. Single motion, because you just made a second motion. If you could withdraw your first motion and restate your reason...
Yeah, here we go.
Withdraw your second motion and state your first motion as a single motion, authorizing the creation of St. Joseph's Tract and authorizing the mayor to sign the said plat.
Okay, I would like to retract my first and second motion and move to authorize the combination of a single tract for St. Joseph and authorize the mayor to sign that.
Second.
Is that better?
Very good. In second. Is there any more discussion? Aaron?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellifler?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll leave these with you.
Pick them up tomorrow or something. Yeah, we're getting the mayor to sign tonight, and we'll get them to test it, and we'll get them to you. Are you going to be able to do that?
Do you want to get them to?
No, to sign the... Oh, there's no, at the station. Yeah, there's, I was in the clerks' legislature, but you should be able to do that.
Okay.
So yeah, you can pick them up tomorrow morning.
Okay, I'll leave this with you and do that. There's three copies, two Mylars, and then a hard copy. And then once I get them, I'll get them recorded, and then you need one.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. You take care. You too. Mr. Johnson, would you like to do this as a councilperson, or do you want to do it as...
We'll just do it from here. If that's okay, the general idea regarding the ice rink simply is to turn it over from private construction and design and maintenance over to the city to maintain it. It may sound like a relatively major step, but I've been in discussion with the city manager and our recreation director. Both are in favor of the plan. It's really very simple. The assets that we have, which is basically lumber designed for the barrier that has been built around the rink in the past. It's been operating since 2015, three seasons, basically, and operating in the black with just donations. The idea here is, a lot of it simply has to do with the time involved that I've spent coordinating this from the beginning, and that time has since been used up. And it would be beneficial to both the city, the community, the residents, and those that would want to participate with the ice rink to turn it over at this point to the city's control, which isn't much of a change. Just to clarify, the public works as well as rec department have been instrumental in maintaining the current structure and promotion, and the biggest portion of that has been, I should explain, the construction and demo of the barrier, the walkway around the deck, the decking, and placing the liner and that kind of thing, much of which is, what I'm proposing at least, and I think it's a good idea, is just to eliminate that barrier, which takes away like 60 or 70% of all the labor involved in setting the thing up. A test from Mr. Renshaw out there, he's been very much involved in the volunteer effort to build that and take it apart. It's been a challenge. If we eliminate the barrier, it becomes a little more like, a little more open space, and it's a tremendous amount less labor. So it's, we're making some changes to make it so it isn't so labor-intensive. Since it operates in the winter, the other thing that came up in our discussions with the city manager and with the rec director is that during the winter, sports and other activities do slow down, and that creates a good opportunity to take advantage of this without adding staff, without adding expense. One of the things that could be done that we weren't able to do is charging for the use, which is not a big deal either, charge a dollar a head or something, just so that there's something there to work with. That would require somebody to be there. That's just, that's for the city to decide. I will still be involved. I just simply will not be coordinating the whole thing. There's just no more time left to do that. So in any case, that's pretty much the picture. We've discussed this at some length, and I sent out an email about some of the pluses and minuses. Any questions?
I have none. I read through it pretty good. And I and Forrest were good with it, so.
So we need a motion for that?
Yeah, you would need a vote to accept the donation of the ice rink and its assets to the city.
Make a motion to approve the donation proposal to the city.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the assets of the ice rink to the city, Montevista. Any more discussion? Aaron?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellifler?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I feel so much better.
Wait, Dr. Shobin.
Citizen comments. City Council, welcome. Do you have any comments? Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. And I have a card here. Mr. Salazar?
You want to take from there, or do you have, you pretty much have to be...
I can yell.
I know I can hear you.
If you're going to yell, go ahead and yell at Gary.
I'd like to thank him for donating the balance of his time to me.
Would you please state your name, sir?
Yes, it's Jerome "Gary" Salazar. And I would like to begin by saying hi to Kathy. We went to high school together. We went to different high schools together. Shane Porter is a wonderful man, and I would suggest he gets his own parking space. And Gary Johnson, last October, I received a letter from the Veterans Administration saying I had been overpaid $89,000 over the last 37 years, and they took the balance of my benefits for several months. But by the energy of Gary Johnson, and we started a congressional investigation, and my benefits were restored. And I think he should be complimented as well with a parking space. Shane Porter approached me a few days, well, on the 30th of August, because I had two Scottish terriers, the only Scotties in the valley, that had jumped a fence at my yard, and it's an eight-foot fence. And I don't know how they got out, because I've had five people go over there and pound nails and put in new boards and stuff. But the fence is antiquated. It's more than 45 years old, and it's rotting. And because of the rains we've had this year, there, it's a really bad repair. I talked to the guy that I'm buying my house from, and he said that he would be here in two to three weeks and either repair it or install a new one. Because I'm disabled, I am not able to do those chores myself, so I have to ask people to help me or pay people to help me. I received this summons, a complaint for my two Scotties. The mother is Sophia. Her little boy was born last Thanksgiving morning, and I named him America. And so I have these two Scotties. And Sophia is a credentialed service animal, and America will be going to school in February. She can smell a chemical change in my breathing at night, and she will go to the refrigerator, pull a towel, and bring me the correct syringe with insulin. I fell a couple of months ago, and I asked her to get me some help, and she went to the living room and brought me back my cellphone. And plus, she does a lot of other things. They both speak, they're both bilingual. They understand Spanish and English. And I asked my dad at one time, they were bilingual, and he said, no, confused. So anyway, these guys got out. And prior to this event, Mr. Porter came and inspected the fence and agreed that it was a mess. And it's an eight-foot fence. It's made of lumber, and the posts are rotting. And these guys are smart enough to push on it and find a way out. Anyway, I'm not asking, I take full responsibility, because I own, I'm buying the house. I take full responsibility for my Scotties. When Shane called them, they came directly to him and brought him to the house, but unfortunately, they had to serve an overnight sentence at the Dog Pound. I believe that the $125 thing, charge, is a reasonable price, and I did sign a payment plan agreement. But I'm not able to make the $40 agreement. We've gone over my budget, and it doesn't fit. Maybe $20. And I'm not going to debate, you know, the issue that I got a ticket. Just, I'm asking for, I guess, less leniency on the $40, but I would agree to pay the 20. And I do take full responsibility for these guys. I don't have any children. I've never been married, so these are my kids. So I've had 25 Scotties in the last 45 years, and they've all been very, very sentimental. So anyway, and these guys are too. They just found a way to get out, and you know, we can only repair it so much before it has to be replaced. So anyway, that's the deal. And my father thanks you. My mother thanks you. My brothers and sisters thank you, and I thank you.
Mr. Salazar?
Write when you get work. I wore a dress.
I don't have time to write. I'm too busy.
Thank you. Can you...
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, so you know, I don't know if you got, but we can't do anything at this meeting, and we'll talk about it.
Well, I invited them to be witnesses, but they said they didn't have much to say.
Sorry. Thank you, Jerry.
Is there any other comments? Okay. Resolution number 11 dash 2018, midyear budget amendments.
It's me again. Aren't you guys sick of me yet? All right.
Not yet.
Not yet. That's good. Oh, shoot. So before I get started, I just wanted to see if any of you had any questions regarding the information that I presented the other night in our meeting? If you had anything you needed to talk about any further?
No, you did a very good job at that. I was very, very pleased with it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. So I guess what I would need to do is ask that you pass the resolution 1128, midyear budget amendments.
Does she need to read it? Would you like me to read the title, sir? Well, we could have. I would like somebody to read it.
The whole, all of it?
No, no. Mr. Rose, here we go. I'll help you.
Thanks, Forrest.
So this evening, for your consideration, you have resolution number 11 dash 2018, a resolution approving an amended budget and appropriation of funds for the calendar year 2018 to authorize expenditures and revenues for the General Fund, GOCO Grant, Kids Connection, Valley 3 Water Fund, Sewer Fund, and Capital Improvement Fund. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks.
You know, we...
What's that?
You're going to owe me.
I know. I'm sorry.
I mean, we approved resolution, resolutions number 11, 2018, budget amendment as stipulated as presented.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution number 11 dash 2018, midyear budget amendments. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Aaron?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellifler?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Evening, mayor, council members. You're going to love this. This will be the briefest report I give for a while. Although, you notice I've been sending you lots of exciting reading material.
Yes, you have.
Kind of to make up for it, right?
You have.
So thank you for approving the budget amendments. I saw you that we're working on the budget process. Jenny's done a really good job rounding up all the spreadsheets, getting all the pieces together. We have met with all of the department heads and sub-departments and kind of gotten through everything. And it's a pretty good place. There are certainly some considerations which I will illuminate further, but not tonight. Other than that, things are moving along pretty well. You know, we're finally over summer, so we're starting to go into our... kind of full activity schedule. You notice the street crews have been out striping. Done a nice job with that. The last part of the sidewalk barrier at Veterans Park came down today. They infilled some stainless stuff in the gap between the asphalt and concrete. So that should be done. We have sent in for the reimbursements on that, that'll take a couple of months. Been learning some new systems from the state. All their grants are now in, well, all the DOLA grants are now in this computerized system, which is actually really cool. Must have figured out how to work it, which wasn't too bad. It's actually gonna make our reporting better, and it's got a nice system in it, so you can go back and look at all your reports in there, which will make things better for our finance director and audit staff, so that's pretty good. Just got, you know, our October 9th workshop, you know, obviously keep reminding you about that. PD, Neighborhood Watch, and also Local Business Assist. Then October 16th, the Budget Work Session. That'll be interesting, as usual. We'll be getting you a lot of the information probably the week before that, so you have plenty of time to look at before we have our meeting. There is nothing, you know, we don't have a whole lot of latitude to do anything particularly different. There are a few different things in there, particularly on the part of the budget, and I always talk about the General Fund a lot. And then Water and Sewer Funds, we're gonna do some of the projects that were in our Water Efficiency Plan. We're gonna definitely do some water and sewer line work, some manhole replacements. Remember, our big wastewater project for all the sewer lines, well, there wasn't quite enough money to do all the manholes that needed to be done, so that'll be in there. And we're gonna do the GIS project, which will be really helpful for our workforce crews, so they can track, you know, each repair that's done. And we'll have really super accurate maps of the water and sewer lines, valves. And we will probably do a valve project as well. There are a lot of valves that need some TLC or replacement, so... Should be pretty interesting, but Jenny's done a really good job, and the staff is always is very cognizant of the fact that we have a limited amount of funds. So I think you'll be pleased with what we have. There'll be a couple of decisions, particularly for you to look at for next year and as we get there. Other than that, two minutes, excellent. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Other wise, keep it moving. Anyone else?
I've not gotten any.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Always, you stay busy. Mike?
See if I can match that time. Mayor, council. I can't say that Forrest has been busy. I see all kinds of stuff, and reports and updates, and so he's plenty busy. And I try and review leases, contracts, things that he has. Terminated a lease here recently, and so reviewed that. Probably the council is aware of our press release that may be coming out at some point, maybe. Reviewed that, didn't like it, but I reviewed it. And I've been in contact with Searson a couple items, nothing too major. Been fairly busy in the court system. I've been working with Nita on the fine schedule. We should hopefully get something finalized here within the next month, I'm hoping. And I think she's on board with what we need to do there. Gonna have an ordinance to amend our underage marijuana possession probably by next meeting. We've got some trials coming up in the city court and dealing with a couple attorneys on a couple of cases. And then we've got some pre-trials. So overall, it's been pretty steady, pretty busy, but nothing too major. I don't know if any of the council has any questions, but hopefully we're keeping the boat afloat, so...
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Which one do you find Officer's gonna be doing our report tonight?
Well, I guess that'll be me. Sergeant has spoken.
Okay, council, mayor, thank you. Really quick, I just want to go over four points. Four things that I've actually been working on since I've been here. I'm sure you're all aware of the last meeting. Before last, Chief was going over the vision triangle issues we're having. So I've located most of the major issues, vision triangle issues around the city, and I have submitted a list of addresses for courtesy letters, letting the people know that they may be or may not be in violation. And while I'm still doing my controls regularly, if I see a new address or see something that may, you know, catch my eye, I'll also write the address down, and they'll get a courtesy letter also for future compliance. The second thing is trash and sewer, trash, water, and sewer. Section 10-5-20 of Municipal Code states, "containers are required." This means approved residential or commercial type loading containers are required throughout the city. All physical, livable addresses or address in Montevista is required to have trash service, meaning, you know, MDS or Waste Management, you're required to have it. Such address is also required to have water. Without your water, your services of water, no sewer is available. And this results in a do not occupy order. I've been doing several of these around the city last couple of weeks. It's sad, but that's just a fact. If your water's not on, you don't have sewer. And the do not occupy order stays in place until all of the utilities are current, especially the water bill. The third thing is abandoned, wrecked, or junked vehicles. Section 5-1-280 of Municipal Code states that no person shall abandon any vehicle within the city limits. I haven't had too many issues with abandoned vehicles. It's mostly just been vehicles with expired tags, and they're parked on city property. That's also under the code, that's no, no, they can't do that. So vehicles with expired tags shall be given a 72-hour notice to comply. And most people want to know what compliance is. Compliance is basically just renewing your tags or moving the vehicle from the city property. If it's not moved within 72 hours and no compliance is made, the vehicle can be towed by the police department. And the last thing on the list is one that I've been dealing with frequently is just animal violations. Dogs running at large has been a huge problem for me throughout the city. Section 6-2-20 states that no animal owner shall fail to exercise proper care and control of his or her animals to prevent them from becoming a public nuisance. I mean, it's pretty clear cut and dry, I think. And I've had a few issues of code violations where dogs are considered dangerous. People want to know what a dangerous dog is, or dangerous dogs that are prohibited. Dangerous dog simply means not the breed of the animal, but any time an animal commits like a physical or bodily injury or has caused any kind of injury or death to a person or another animal, that's when the animal is considered a dangerous animal, dangerous dog, and it's prohibited. So per code, basically, when a dog does something like this, an animal bite occurs, the dog is immediately taken to the animal shelter for 10 days for observation. That way, we can check and make sure there's no diseases like rabies, infectious diseases, or anything wrong with the animal. So after the 10-day period, there is a penalty fee that's included. So the owner, after the 10th day, is allowed to reclaim their animal, but they have to pay all the shelter fees. And finally, underneath that also, section 6-2-50 is vaccinations. Registration and license are required through the city. It states that it shall be the duty of every person who owns or harbors any dog in the city to: One, have such dog vaccinated by a regularly licensed veterinarian of the state of Colorado. Two, obtain a certificate from the veterinarian setting out the fact of the vaccination or type of vaccination. And three, obtain from the city clerk a license and registration for each dog. Now, this pretty much means any store-bought vaccinations or self-vaccination is invalid. It's not valid. So I ran into several cases where people are saying, "My dog's vaccinated." I ask them if they have proof, they say, "No, there's no proof of vaccination other than they bought a vaccination from Big R." That's also a code violation, so the dog again goes to the shelter for an observation to make sure there's no rabies or anything like that. So that's the gist of it. I mean, I've just, daily, I come in contact with people whose dogs are not registered. They have no vaccination records, and this is a huge problem because of rabies. So I just want to bring these four things to your attention, let you know what I've been working on, working on more daily as I'm out doing my patrol. I've been taking plenty of dogs to the shelter, as some people know, especially Kathleen. She knows staying busy, never a dull day. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. All right, thank you for your time, miss. That's all I have for you.
Good evening, council. Pretty nice pace that we're going along. I think I'm gonna stick with the tradition here now and keep it pretty short. Luckily, most of what we have for the month of August, really some of the bigger ticket items, I did mention briefly during the last report, some of those being that we have more access points around the city building. We have a new public separate network that's removed from our business network, so that adds an extra layer of protection to our business assets. We've done some listings for Public Works in Roba on the City of Alamosa's auction website, which I believe those were sold, and all the money and of that gets settled back over here. So that was something that we've worked with Public Works on. Other than that, we do have a new IT employee, Christian, who's with me over here. Yeah, I'm gonna put the spotlight on him. He is a new IT technician for us, and he's been with us for two days so far, but so far, we haven't successfully scared him away, and he seems to be very knowledgeable. So I just want to introduce you guys to him, and let you know that we're excited to have him. So other than that, see if there's anything else. We did add a new network monitoring service, so we now can remotely monitor from wherever we are if some network failure happens here where we are no longer on the internet. We get alerted. All of the technicians will be set up for that, so if there was some sort of network emergency, rain, sleet, or snow, we'll be here. And if you have any questions, I'll be free to answer those.
Welcome aboard.
Yep. Welcome.
It's a pleasure to be here, that's for sure.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, councils.
Appreciate it, you guys. Thank you.
Council committee, city commission, and council reports. Kathy, do you have anything?
It's been busy, it always is. Potato Fest, I thought, was awesome. It was a lot of fun. It was well done, and visiting the gym. He said he'd like, he'd love to be able to sit down with the city in maybe a work session and talk about how maybe the city and Potato Fest could come together to help grow that event. I didn't get to talk to Forrest, but they really had some issues with insurance this year, and didn't know if that was something, anyway, we could try to help with, for them, their personal insurance for the event. Crime Stoppers, last month, the old board officially retired. Most of the new board members are here in Montevista. Vice President's sitting over there. And we'll be meeting at the police department Monday afternoon. And so that's all, getting the banking turned over has been, changed, has been interesting. But that's happening, and that's a good thing. And I think they've had four crime stopper tips for Montevista? Three or four? That have been solved, yeah. And so the Chief, Chief Rose Crams and the officers are getting them out there, and they're getting responses, and that's being, I think, really helpful for the police department. Neighborhood Watch was Monday, and we had Judge Saunders, the city municipal judge, was there to talk to the group, and she had, I think, lots of nice comments. I think people really enjoyed the comments and hearing from her and her ideas about, you know, how to do things differently and think about things differently. So rather than costing the city lots of money through public service and things like that, some things are, some of the crimes are being dealt with, or the misdemeanors. And she's all over that, and really in favor of that, and connecting if there's things that need community service or like community service hours, there's ways to do that, and getting in touch with her, and she's building a list for those community service hours. So the shelter and the garden group, and a lot of these. And next month, the Neighborhood Watch meeting is October 15th, Monday, October 15th, at 6 o'clock. And there will be a representative from the District Attorney's Office at the group to visit about some of the things they're doing, their ideas. And please, if you're interested or have questions for the District Attorney's Office, that's a really good time to be able to visit with them informally. Join the library ward in one of those meetings, and that's interesting. And Carol Lee is awesome, and keeping our library in great shape. And the only other thing is Coffee with a Cop in October... What's that date? October 3rd at 8 o'clock, and that is the National Coffee with a Cop date. So if you have time to come out and participate in that, that would be really awesome. And that's all I have. Great.
Kathy?
I want to second your opinion. I think the Potato Festival was probably one of the most successful and well-attended that we've had. And I don't know if there's anyone who's kept record or keeps track of those numbers, but I'm pretty sure it was one of the most well-attended ones. And the booths, everybody had a great time. The animal shelter certainly participated and was successful in adopting out several dogs and cats, which is a boost for us. We have been full, as Shane can tell you. There was a time, a couple of weeks ago, we had no room at the inn. There was none. And, but we have done a transfer to another no-kill shelter, and we've made a little bit of room. Spent some time bumping around in a golf cart on the golf course, visiting, and that was a nice afternoon, well-spent, and very informative. The golf cart course looks great, and the reason I did that is because that's one of the committees I chose when I sat on council, or that chose me, maybe. I also had the opportunity, at that very same time, to visit with someone who'd been out of the country for many years and grew up in Montevista, is an old San Luis Valley native. Comes, the family came from the San Luis Valley, and he was amazed at how nice Montevista looked. And he really has been out of the country for probably 12 years. And he said, "The town is clean, the yards are green, the windows in the stores were all, you know, painted for whatever the event was." And he said, "It's so nice to see stores filling up, and people out on the street, and cars up and down the street." He was amazed. So that goes to everybody out there who's working on the streets and taking care of all those things. That's great news. It's nice to hear. That's it?
That's it.
Victor? Jerry?
Yeah, just one thing, but I thought I'd also clarify for those listening in on YouTube that Kathy was describing the success of the booths, not the booze.
The booze, of course.
Just picked up on that.
Of course.
In any case, yeah, I'm sorry about what's going on, but I want to mention one that recently was at the meeting of the San Luis Valley Veterans Coalition, which Mr. Salazar alluded to. That was, it wasn't me that got his benefits reinstated, or whatever. It was, I was instrumental in it, but it basically originated... It was, I was instrumental in it, but it basically originated from a contact that we made at the San Luis Valley Veterans Coalition, which meets every third Thursday down, and it's in Alamosa. The only thing they told me, I have to hunt for it each time, because it's where the Grisly Restaurant used to be. Anyhow, in any case, the reason I wanted to mention that is that they are an extremely effective organization, and if you, if you're a veteran or if you know any veterans that are in any kind of need at all, even if they're not, I just go there to gather information. They do a phenomenal job with the veterans community, specifically here in San Luis Valley. So, it's a, it's a very effective organization if, again, just, you know, I think the website is S L V V C, I don't know, if you Google the Veterans Coalition, you'll, you'll find it. I just wanted to pass that on and let you know that it's one of, there's a lot of good organizations around, but in terms of serving our veteran community, which is very important to us out here in this valley, that is certainly one of the top places to go and to refer somebody.
Very good. As Kathy said, the Potato Fest was amazing. There was a lot of people there. I enjoyed the food, as always.
And booze. I'm sorry.
I appreciate everybody that's here tonight. I see our crowds getting a little thin, and, you know, we're all in this, when we all stepped up to this plate, it's not the council doing this, it's this community that we need here all the time, and it's kind of dwindled out. You know, there's gonna be some serious decisions that are gonna be, have to be made, and we gotta come together as a community to do it. We can do the, make, make the decisions, but we're here for the community, so we need community involvement. We need people to start coming again in meetings. I appreciate what everybody here has done.
Just one thing that just popped in my head is, you know, there's a lot of people that apparently have issues out there, but they failed to come to the meetings and, and bring those to the council or, you know, to make those public. So, I would just encourage anybody, you know, out there that runs into somebody to encourage them to come, you know, because if, if we, if, if we don't hear those, then we can't address anything, you know? My, my wife has been, you know, approached and been talked to, and she's told him, you know, you have an opportunity to, to talk at the council meeting, you know, and they just kind of were like, oh, oh, you know, and they kind of like, kind of backtracked.
I think the mayor's wife.
You know? So, but, but, you know, I'm sure that you guys probably hear people talk, you know, so just encourage them to come out, so.
That's, that's very good, Victor, I appreciate that. And when they come with a concern, try to come with a solution.
Right.
So, I appreciate everything everybody's doing. So, anybody else do not have anything?
I have one thing left to say. Better say it, because I don't want Mike to get on me.
We're still meeting, I guess.
I should have said it a while ago, but I didn't think about it. So, there's three things, okay? So, Mario Valdez, Officer Valdez, is now in his solo phase of training, I believe. He's doing that, and then they're doing a lot of testing right now for, is it the corporal position they're testing for? Yeah, they're testing for corporal position now, so some guys are gonna move up. We won't know anything, I guess, until, I don't know, a couple of weeks or so, who made that position. And last but not least, Officer Michael Martinez is now a sergeant. He moved up to sergeant now instead of corporal. So, he is now Sergeant Michael Martinez. So, I just wanted to add that, because I knew if I forgot and didn't add it, chief might say something. That's it.
So, we will adjourn.